This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, November 15th. Please stand for our invocation led by Bishop Levy Knox, Living Word Christian Center International Ministries, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And our city council with prayer, and we're so grateful. Joining with me is my lovely wife Pastor Delia Knox. This is going to be a great strategic meeting. I believe the Lord is going to really bless this meeting in such a wonderful way. So let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege to come into your presence. We know that your presence changes the atmosphere, shifts the climate, and brings us to a focus of what you desire for the city council as they do business under the rule and the rank of Christ. We pray that your wisdom, knowledge, and understanding will be so clear to their hearts as they discuss the meaningful projects in different areas of our city that needs to be addressed properly. Father, we thank you for the city council. We thank you for the Honorable Mayor, Mayor Simpson. We thank you, Lord, for the ability to lead properly under your rule and rank. And Father, we thank you for leadership that understand that leadership is not the pursuing of power, but it's about empowering others. We thank you, Lord, for the wisdom that will flow freely and joy and peace throughout our city. We pray, Father, in the name of Jesus, where there has been violence in our streets in Mobile and throughout the city, let it be replaced with harmony and peace. Lord, where there's been division, where there's been hatred, let there be unity and love and joy and peace. So we thank you today, Father, for your presence and continually to look to you throughout this meeting. May everyone that comes together come for the purpose of making our city a better city than any before, anytime before. So we look to you and we thank you that you are the great God, our Father. Dying is the greatness, the power, the glory, the majesty, and the victory, for everything in heaven and earth belongs to you. For dying is the kingdom. And Lord, you are exalted above every head because you're the head above all. So we speak blessings, peace, and we speak productive, purposeful meeting today. We commend this meeting in your hands for your glory and your praise. For this, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen. God bless you.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Again, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone at our meeting. Again, we do apologize. We had the mayor prayer breakfast this morning, which pushed our pre-meeting back further than it usually goes, which made our regular meeting start around about 10:50 this morning. Again, we do apologize for that this morning. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, such as a cellphone, at this time, please put on the off of the vibrating position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person who desires to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of November 1st.
Today is.
And promptly moving to second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of minutes of the past.
Communications from the mayor.
Well, good morning. It's good to see everyone here. We appreciate you being here with us today. I want to kind of recap last weekend. It was a very, very busy weekend. It started with Veterans Day Parade. It's actually the first time that a parade has rolled down Broad Street between the roundabout and Government Street. So we know that it'll hold up afloat. And as soon as they finish the last layer of asphalt, that part of Broad Street will be open permanently, probably by the year end. At that time during the, prior to the, excuse me, after the parade, a couple of individuals were recognized for their service. One is a local Frank Barra, who is Lieutenant Colonel. He spent so much time in our school system, ROTC, in helping our young people make the decisions to follow a career in the armed services. And the other one was Lieutenant General, retired from the US Marine Corps, Lieutenant, excuse me, Lieutenant General Willie J. Williams was also recognized. The parade was seamless. I want to thank all the city employees who participated in making that happen. It's just not on automatic pilot. I mean, it takes a lot of work to coordinate those, but it's also kind of gives us a dry run. It's not really a dry run, but a preparation for Montegro, making sure that everything's going to be ready for that event. Also, we had art walk. Appreciate the Porch Creek Indians by bringing their dancers here. It's the first time they've been at art walk, so grateful for that. Couple of big ball games, Jackson State versus Alabama A&amp;M and USA versus Texas State. Both of them were going on at the same time, which really put a strain on all of our first responders, but they did an outstanding job. All of it was held without any incidents. And I will also say that the Jags are now eight and two, which is the best one-loss record that they've ever had. So congratulations to them. This Friday, on Friday, November 18th, Montegro Park will have the lighting of the Christmas tree. The ceremony's kind of began at 5:30. The actual lighting of the tree will be at 6:30. A lot of activity there. We'll have a DJ there with holiday-themed princesses, photo opportunities, bounce houses, snacks vendors, and so forth. So we hope to see you at the lighting of the Christmas tree as we ring in the holiday season. Also, this weekend on Saturday, from 3:00 to 5:00, will be the inaugural Africa Town Lantern Walk. It will be in Africa Town. It begins at the training school and passes by several of the historic churches there, and it ends at the Africa Town Cemetery. The organizers are looking to restart a tradition of the Lantern Walk, which hasn't happened in the community since 1952. So, Mr. President, that would conclude my remarks for today.
Mayor?
Mr. President?
Gregory.
Before we move on, the mayor had mentioned, of course, our veteran and Patriot of the Year, and I did just want to recognize Mr. Eddie Erby who was here because Mr. Erby too was recognized during the Patriot of the Year celebration. He won the Captain Hal Pierce Memorial Award for his service to the city. I think most everyone knows that Mr. Erby has certainly distinguished himself and has dedicated his life to local veterans and veterans organizations. And so I was really excited for him and pleased that he received this award during the Patriot of the Year celebration last week during Veterans Week. So thank you, Mr. Erby.
Mr. President?
Before we move on, I heard the mayor mention inaugural run.
I noticed that the parade started at Clarborn and went down Canal Street. Did we use Route J for the Veterans Day Parade? Or was it abbreviated form of Route A? Just asking so that the Church Street East neighbors and the Downey Bay group would have a reference to use as to how the parade would function on that route.
Really wasn't sure what the question was on the.
Did we use the new Route J? I noticed the parade started at Clarborn, went down Canal, up Broad. Was the route the new route, proposed new route for Montegro that was used?
Yeah, there are no proposed new routes for Montegro. I think they're looking at alternatives as a, that we may have to revisit, but we haven't actually proposed any new routes for Montegro.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
In keeping with the month of the veteran, Ms. Joyce Reed is here representing Flags of Valor, and she has a presentation to make to one of our veterans who serves in the firefighters this morning. Ms. Reed?
Thank you for inviting me here today. I'm Joyce Reed, and I represent the local Azadie City Filters Guild and the Quilts of Valor Foundation. We are now a national organization of over 10,000 filters that was founded in 2003 by Blue Star Mom Catherine Roberts of Seaford, Delaware. Her son was a gunner in Iraq sitting atop a Humvee. She felt 10 seconds away from panic 24/7. One night Catherine had a dream of a post-deployment warrior struggling with his war demons at 2:00 in the morning. And according to Catherine, this dream was as vivid as real life. She saw a young man sitting on the side of his bed in the middle of the night, hunched over. The permeating feeling to her was one of utter despair. She could see his war demons clustered around, dragging him down into an emotional gutter. Then, as if viewing a movie, she saw him in the next scene wrapped in a quilt. His whole demeanor had changed from one of despair to one of hope and well-being. The quilt had made this dramatic change, she felt. She felt the message of her dream was quilts equal healing. Her son Nathaniel's year-long deployment to Iraq provided her with the initial inspiration, and her desire to see that returning warriors will welcome home with the love and gratitude they deserve provided her with the rest. She made one quilt, and it was so well-received that she decided to enlist her friends and see if they couldn't make 100 quilts to thank veterans. When they finished this project, they'd realize that it needed not to stop, that it needed to continue, and it's become even bigger. The model was simple, have a group who would make quilts and then would award them to the veterans. So 19 years later, they are at 2,647 quilts last month, 20,862 year-to-date, and for a total of 323,574 quilts so far from 10,000 volunteers nationwide. Our mission is to cover all combat service members and veterans touched by war with comforting and healing Quilts of Valor to say thank you for your service, your sacrifice, and your valor. A couple of the thank you notes that I've received from those who've done quilts. Donald was a quilt, was one of nine children. All five of the boys were allowed by his mom and dad to join the service, even though mom knew what their signing their name on the dotted line meant. They were offering it all up to defend our freedoms, even if it meant they might not come home. Four of those five did come home, but only after 20-plus years each serving their country. Donald said he'd been studying Daniel in Sunday School and how God wrapped his arms around Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego to protect them in the fiery furnace. He wondered about Quilts of Valor when he was offered to come to the presentation. He looked us up on the web and was very impressed with what we do. He said he'll feel like God has him wrapped up in his arms every time he uses his quilt, just like he did for Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. Greg was also awarded a quilt recently, and this is his wife's thank you. It's a gift of time and love from quilters who help honor those who have served. It's an awesome program, very emotionally moving as they use these beautiful handworks to represent a hug of thanks, an act of service for a time of service. It's the candidate that leaves a happy squeeze on the hearts of the service members and their families. I know it left a happy squeeze on ours. So the answer to why Quilts of Valor is this. It's a wonderful form of national service. It's one tangible way I can give back to others who have put their lives on the line for the freedoms I enjoy, the freedom to assemble, the freedom of free speech, of religion, my right to bear arms, et cetera. I've always thought of a quilt as a way to share a warm hug with a friend or family member. For many who service to their country when unnoticed, this warm hug is invaluable because we all remember the days when they came home and they didn't get a thank you of any kind from anyone. So today, we'd like to thank one of our local fire department members. James McDavid has served our fire department since 2015, and he's been a driver this year. He joined the Army Reserve from 2004 to 2012 and has been a part of the National Guard since 2013. He served in Operation Iraqi Freedom as an NCO Combat Operations Officer. He was commissioned as an officer in 2018 and served in Syria as a part of Operation Inherent Resolve and as an infantry platoon leader in 2019 and '20. He enlisted as the rank of A6, Staff Sergeant, but he's been since commissioned as a First Lieutenant. He received the Army Good Conduct Medal, the Army Reserve Component Achievement Medal, National Defense Service Medal, Global War on Terrorism, three Iraqi Campaign Medals. He's a non-commissioned officer and got the Professional Development Ribbon, an Army Service Ribbon, an Armed Forces Reserve Badge, a Combat Infantry Badge, the Inherent Resolve Campaign, and today he serves as a driver for the Mobile Police Department. We'd like to ask James to come forward and receive his quilt today. Thank you for his service. Thank you. Got my husband here because the quilters who are actually quilting today, making charity quilts. That's my Harold is here to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you guys so much.
We'll give him his presentation case. It's a glorified color case. You should show him the color that's just behind his head on the couch or to store it slip in. Thank you very much for your service, James.
Adoption of the agenda?
Second. And promptly moving to second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on December 17th on Hillcrest Road and May 25th in Cooper Riverside Park.
So moved to second.
And promptly moving to second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeals passed.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to determine, to declare the structures at 607 Pettit Avenue, 357 Rylands Lane, and 604 Taita Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Just open up the public hearing for the said properties. If anyone present that would like to address the council, you may do so by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address.
Melissa Davis, 4357 Rylands Lane. I'm the current owner of this property. My property was burned down on December of '21 by squatters. I have not been able to pay for reconstruction.
Could you speak a little bit closer to the mic, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, my property was burned down by squatters in December of '21. I've not been able to pay for reconstruction or demolish of this property due to health issues. I recently started that working, and I plan to have the property demolished and cleaned up within the next 60 days. I am aware that the property is a public nuisance, and I am sorry. Please allow me this time to get the property cleaned up. Thank you for your time.
You asked for additional sister days?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll? All right, sister days, the council will grant you. Go ahead and take care of that. Thank you so much for coming down. Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on any of these said properties? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, just one thing in response to that, that I don't know what we can do, if anything, but if you heard her statement, she's going through this because squatters were in a house and burned it down. I would not hesitate to say that probably right this second in every one of our districts, there are squatters in some house that don't belong. And when I try and resolve the problem in my district, I have nothing but barriers in the way, every step of the way, all the way up from the Realtor that's responsible or the mortgage company that's responsible for the home, the state legislator to federal legislator. We've got to find some way to get after this because it is a significant negative impact in every part of this city. And if we could get some state legislator to champion this, I'd be grateful. But we've got to find some way to get after this. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Today is a public hearing to consider amending Section 64.3.1, Downtown Development District of the Current Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code, 1991, and amend Appendix A, Downtown Development District of the Unified Development Code, Chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code.
Just open up the public hearing for this said item. Anyone like to make a presentation to the council? You may do so by coming down to the podium by stating your name and your address.
Good morning. It's Elizabeth Stevens, 261 Dolphin Street. I just want to thank Councilwoman Carroll and Councilwoman Jones for working together on a compromise that allows for the integrity of the Downtown Development District to be maintained and the transect zones to be maintained. Y'all will hear that next week. I will not be able to attend the meeting next week, so I wanted to go ahead and thank you all. I watched the public hearing, I mean, the committee meeting, and just thank y'all for working together on a compromise. Also, want to thank Joel and CJ and Gina for passing the original Downtown Development District legislation in 2014. And then again, I think it was modified in 2017. So thank you for your longstanding support. We've seen tremendous development of downtown in that time, and it's been a real important tool for development. So thank you.
Is anyone else present that would like to make a presentation to the council on this item? If not?
Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I'll be brief because I know this will be back up again in the coming days, but all of the people who I would call stakeholders for this particular area were not forced to be a part of all the negotiations and meetings that were going on. So just for point of clarity, where can the citizens who do not know what the amendments are specifically find that language? And is there something that we need to request? Or is it something that's available online? Or how is it available to those people who aren't aware what the proposed amendments are?
You speak in the microphone.
It is available on the city's website.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
If anyone else would like to address the council on this particular item? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reverend Elsie Green.
Good morning. Pastor Elsie Green, 1500 Hillcrest Avenue, City of Mobile. I come with three things that I need the council to address, or I might be able to address it back to the citizens of my community. Number one, is there meetings being held? Or is there not meetings being held on the annexation? And if the meetings are being held, is it public meetings? Number two, is there a plan in place? Or is there not a plan in place? We're getting two different things. And if there's a plan in place, will it be made available to the public? And a deep concern, a deep concern is this, and I'm going to use the word conspiracy because my college education let me down for lack of a better word. But is there a conspiracy by anyone to delete or to dilate the minority vote? And I would like for that to be addressed in any kind of way that y'all might be able to address it. That's a concern in the community. The minorities feel that there's a move in annexation to delete or water down, if not altogether eliminate, of a vote. Thank you.
I would like to say to you, thank you so much for coming down. Pretty much there have been talks about annexation going on and been talks about it for years. Recently, it has come up again for the last couple of months with talks, and administration is willing to talk to anybody, to any citizen, about their thoughts or opinions about annexation. I've stated this several times in council meeting within the past month or so that the administration doors has been opened. So anyone have any ideas and suggestions and concerns, please at this time before they roll out anything, contact the administration. Okay? And again, it's only been talks. Nothing has not been presented formally to this council yet. But again, if anybody would like to talk or have anything, suggestions, or any concerns, we ask them that, you know, for them to go ahead and contact the administration. And also, the only person I can speak to is CJ Small. By diluting the vote or anything, it's not, in my opinion, or my thoughts or my will to do that. The only person I can speak of is CJ Small. Thank you so much for coming. Madam Clerk?
Ann Davis, 967 Westbury Drive, Mobile, Alabama. Good morning. I want to thank y'all for allowing me to speak to you about LAD's relationship with the city and the future of LAD. And please know that our board is always very appreciative of any funding that you give us. The extra funding that we received for the Gulf Coast Challenge Game was awesome. It allowed us to do some cleanup and make the stadium look as good as possible for the game. We had over 33,000 people in the seats, but a good 40,000 or so at the event. It was huge. From what I've seen and heard so far, this event produced a tremendous economic boom for the hotels and restaurants in downtown Mobile, which is what we all strive to accomplish. What other venue in Mobile can provide this impact? Plus, the HBCU games are a big part of sports in the future. This was Governor Ivory, Ivy declared HBCU Month in October. Just a little history. When the city was given LAD Stadium on August 8th, 1984, it was the county commissioners who incorporated LAD into a municipality, and they appointed the board members. The name of this municipality was the Public Parts and Recreation Board. Then on December 19th, 2005, this was changed to have the city council appoint the board members instead of the commissioners. As stated in our Articles of Incorporation and our bylaws, the LAD Board was given total authority to make contracts, borrow money, buy bonds, lease land, and to conduct, and I quote, "any and all business related to LAD." This authority. This authority is our own mechanism, as stated by state law under the nineteen seventy-five code of Alabama. The city was charged with keeping LAD up. In other words, each board member is an extension of a council person. And this is a two-way street. Um, we, we want to say that somehow the relationship has changed over the years. For instance, we lost one of our board members who became chairman of another, uh, organization. And he resigned over ten months ago and we still don't have a replacement. So, we've been working all year with just six members. Moving forward, we just want to have a great working relationship where we both understand our roles and how to help each other. This past weekend proved that LAD has a very strong place in the Mobile community by contributing to an influx of visitors, filling up hotels and restaurants and the quality of life for all citizens. LAD is worth keeping. Is my time up?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much for coming down and, uh, we appreciate all the hard work that you do for the LAD board and everything.
Thank you. I, I just hope that sometime in the near future that we could perhaps have a meeting and discuss this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And thank all of you in the city for all that you do for LAD.
Harry Teeford.
Good afternoon. The Parrot Heads are coming. In about a year, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, distinguished dignitaries and guests, and especially my fellow citizens of Mobile. Congratulations on the amazing city of Mobile. Y'all have done a great job with the dreams and aspirations of your predecessors to see Mobile.
Excuse sir, give us your name and your address.
It is coming up. My name is a lot of names. I'm Harry T., Harry Teeford, Billy Ray Flynn, Coin de Bone. I'm a radio personality with A-1A Media. Mostly Harry Teeford, resident of Seven North Bayou Street, right off of Dolphin Street down here. Moved just recently back from the Keys and it's cold as the devil here. My purpose is to bring great tidings and good news from the Jimmy Buffett Parrot Head Nation, AKA Parrot Heads in Paradise. Um, the, uh, I am the president, uh, past president of the four, seven, six, thirteen American Federation of Musicians, leader of the Mardi Gras band Jubilation, co-producer of the CD Sounds of the Original Mardi Gras, nineties WNSP FM local sports radio personality, uh, now residing downtown Mobile. Relocating recently back to Mobile after eighteen years in Florida Keys, my business is A-1A Media, a virtual media entertainment event video and production of podcasts and whose business is primarily the affiliate radio A-1A. It's an app on your phone, Radio A-1A. Uh, and it is the news and event, uh, source for the Parrot Head Nation. Uh, I owe the inspiration of this for, uh, radio A-1A to the Mobile musical education and experience at the University of Mobile and the local club event Mardi Gras music scene. Parrot Head Nation, as I refer to them, is a fanatically wildly dressed over fifty bunch of empty, and they all know what a parrot head is. They follow, uh, Jimmy Buffett. But they have hundreds of chapters all over the world. And speaking of the party, in my media capacity, I had the pleasure during the live radio remote during the, uh, interview with a parrot head following the flock, P-H-O-L-L-O-W-I-N-G, following the flock of parrot heads. Whose motto of party, the purpose was questioned. He said, "I, I don't know about all that, but we came to party and spend all of our money." And the, and the wife said, "We saved all year for this." And I watched a table of five and thousands of dollars raised just last October the thirtieth at Ground Zero in Cape Coral, Florida for the Hurricane Ian benefit and also for Alzheimer's, thousands of dollars. Um, as invited media, I attended a press conference at the Casa Marina Hotel at Ken Key West on this past Thursday, November the third, announcing the Parrot Head Convention two thousand and twenty-three Meeting of the Mines will take place in Gulf Shores, Orange Beach, Alabama. At that press conference, I met the owners of the Hangout. Well, that was a shack in nineteen sixty-nine I played music at. Anyway. But, uh, a meeting of the mines spent twenty-five years in Key West and thirty years in New Orleans, but it's moving to Gulf Shores. That's sixty miles from here. The economic influence circle is unbelievable. My tour is a follow the flock music tour that started in Key Largo.
I'm sorry, sir, you have reached your three minutes and everything, but we.
Indeed. Uh, all this is present for you in the entire.
Thank, thank you so much. Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
Chastity Ebeli.
Hello, good morning. I'm Chastity Ebeli, a native Mobilean. Address is four twenty-two Dolphin Island Parkway. I'm asking the council to move something for that the mayor had brought up in two, uh, twenty seventeen. And that was for the decriminalization of cannabis, which is also known as marijuana. And please don't confuse it with legalization. Um, the mayor was very much ahead of his time. In two thousand and seventeen, he was proposing an ordinance that would decriminalize it, which would make it a ticketed offense. And since then, Tuscaloosa, Birmingham, Huntsville, and Jefferson County have adopted that type of ordinance. And so I would ask that we see the ordinance become back on the agenda and see if we can maybe get a weigh-in with the citizens of Mobile. As we've heard from Chief Barber, we've heard from Ricardo Woods, and of course, Mayor Stimson. The, the ordinance is not necessarily pro-drug. It's not necessarily pro-cannabis. It's more pro-police. What the ordinance will do, it frees up the police officer's time. It's making it a ticketable offense. Laws change, laws transgress to meet the society and to complement society. Crime is obviously on the rise everywhere and it doesn't, it's not going to stop. And I think that police officers will probably agree that they need to be available for those violent crimes and those more important phone calls than simple minor marijuana arrest. Thank you for hearing me speak today. And one thing I would like to add is that we are at a time now where over half of the Americans live in, in states where marijuana and cannabis is decriminalized. So, the time is now. In two thousand and seventeen, the ordinance was great. It was just simply ahead of its time. But I think that we see a federal tone for a reason. I mean, just recently, President Biden requested, I think, four thousand blanket pardons for decriminalization. So, the time is now. The time is for the law to change, to meet and complement the society. I'd like to see this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Chastity. Uh, Mr. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, want to, want to clear up a misconception here. I know the Associated Press created a headline, but it was never the administration's intent to decriminalize uh, marijuana. The, the intent was both procedural and policy-based to give police officers more capacity. And I think, um, what our speaker did say is we were turning it into a ticketed offense. That, that was the intent, is to be able to keep officers on the street for, for the time being. That was however, rejected in large part because it cannot be a ticketed offense per state law. Um, and we were given notice not only by the Attorney General at the time, but the District Attorney's Office, that it could not be a ticketed offense. And that's why we abandoned that method. This should not be confused in any way, shape or form with medical cannabis. Um, not the same thing, not at all. I know sometimes those two get conflated. Not the same thing, not dealing with the same issues at all. Um, any, anyone who says as much is, is not only giving you uh, misinformation, but your disinformation is what you're dealing with once you read the literature. Just want to make that clear.
So, Mr. Woods, by state law, that you all could not do what you wanted to do, but what about these other cities that the speaker has spoke of?
So, I, I can address that issue too. And, and I think our, our chief was more than, uh, willing to deal with that as well at the time. What those other cities decided to do was a lack of enforcement. But what we have done is anytime a state law is on the books in the city, we typically try to follow the law and enforce that. We'll do that with any controlled substance. So, as long as it's on the books, we will continue to enforce it. What you're, I think what you referenced, what the speaker referenced is no longer making arrests. But it is still a criminal offense to have a controlled substance, especially one without a prescription, whether that's marijuana or otherwise. And we will continue to enforce that in the way that the, uh, state has, has prescribed for us.
Thank you for clearing that up. Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Carroll.
Thank you. Um, this morning at pre-council, it was stated that the administration will have and ordinance, uh, presented to the council next week. Uh, for consideration of this council for legal, uh, a legal uh, dispensary for the city of Mobile. Um, at this time, let me make it clear. Uh, I'm going to say I'm already in favor of it. If you would, please add me as a sponsor to the, to the ordinance when it comes out. Um, I don't see where there is a, a, a problem with this, especially for the medical use and the medical needs for some people that have a major need for this type of help. Um, I've never in my life, uh, been a, 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 I guess, a pothead or had any involvement with drugs. I was an athlete, so I really stayed away from it. But from what I hear from other people across the country, this has really helped a whole lot of people. So, please add me as a sponsor. Let me be clear, uh, I am in support of it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
As usual, the state puts the cities in a position to enact something that they themselves are not ready to execute. There is no architecture for this city to put a dispensary in the city limits tomorrow. Surely, the expectation is everybody will obey the laws. What laws? I haven't seen a law yet that discusses this. It wasn't that long ago, we had two doctors go to federal prison for violating prescription drugs and handing out prescription drugs. And here we are, we're going to let somebody come down and open a dispensary. And I'm not for this. I'm not against it. But the reality is there's laws. And we should be a law-abiding city. And we say we want to get it in the hands of, you know, Mike Dow has called me personally and said veterans need this. No doubt. And the VA administers it. All I've asked this body to do is have a meeting with the commission to come and answer our questions. Because I've asked our judges if they've seen any laws where things will have to come to them and them to enforce something if somebody is not abiding by whatever laws governs this. They're not there. I've asked our police captains and the chief of police, is this going to help you or is this going to hurt you? The answer is, I don't know. If we don't know, the mayor stood in front of the prayer breakfast today and said the greatest danger we have to this city right now is the negative impacts we have of policemen leaving the force. And we have a huge delta in what we need versus what we have. And here we are going to pass something that the police are going to have to enforce. And there's not a black and white line drawn in the sand. I've dealt with rules and regulations my entire life. And the only way that you can have an orderly society is to have a black and white line. And there's not one here. And I don't care that the state legislator said, "Cities, you can do this." The state has an inherent responsibility to give us the guidelines of cities of how to enact that. And that has yet to be done. So, it is absolutely one hundred percent irresponsible to say, "Hey, go put this mind-altering drug in the hands of folks and we don't have any idea how to make sure that we're going to do it in a legal way." And, and that is where we are today because nobody's come down here and proven it any different. And I've heard people tell me, "Well, that's not your role and function. You're just letting it be established." Is it not this city council's role and function to make sure that this city stays safe? Because I get those phone calls every day multiple times a week. Who approves the ABC license for alcohol? Shouldn't this be the same thing? Where's the regulations? I have the regulations for alcohol. There are no regulations for this. Give us the regulations and then I'll approve it. We have regulations for marijuana today. It's illegal. Yet on a Friday or Saturday night, I can't walk down Dolphin Street without inhaling it. We're not enforcing it. Do the right thing. I hear that every week. Do the right thing. Well, putting a mind-altering drug in the hands of this city without any type of guidelines is anything but. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Carroll. Thank you. Um, I can't remember the, the way the state words this exactly, but maybe, uh, Mr. Woods can, uh, help me. I think that the state in setting this up will allow four licenses across the state and thirty-seven locations across the state where this can happen as far as dispensaries. Uh, we don't know where all of them will be. We don't even know if they, if there will be one in Mobile. But allowing Mobile to have the opportunity is something that I am not opposed to again. And please ask me, add me as a co-sponsor. Uh, last time though I checked, uh, we were using such things as hemp and the oils and things that came from hemp that give the same response as cannabis. And the last time I checked, uh, cannabis wasn't a prescription drug. And, and the last time I checked, cannabis wasn't a drug at all. Uh, so, Mr. President, uh, I conclude those remarks. And I agree with the administration and the mayor and everybody one hundred percent this time. Let's move forward.
Hey, man, cause nothing on our agenda brought us today. Madam City Clerk.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, uh, Madam City Clerk, citizens and, excuse me, stakeholders of Mobile. Uh, good morning, Reggie Hill, uh, one thousand seven Center Street. Um, I rise today to present the, uh, references to the amendments for chapters thirty-eight and forty-six of the Mobile Municipal Code, um, as well as the sentiments, uh, or essentials rather, for a draft towards, uh, ARP funds being used through resolution and creation of guidelines, uh, for surplus spending through ordinance. And I felt it was necessary to mention that because I'm pretty sure the clerk's office was instructed this morning not to mention the specifics because of all the content that was turned in. So, I'm believing that you will have an opportunity to review that between now and next week as I begin to present, uh, the remainder of these items pertaining to the Mobile Municipal Code. Uh, I'm going to, however, still briefly explain the intent and purpose of these amendments, um, as well give you an overview of what is necessary within that resolution and the ordinance. Uh, I sent you the materials regarding thirty-eight, uh, point ten. Uh, and it's the importance of investigatory measures, uh, regarding city employees being formally conducted by citizens. Uh, not the same people who are being investigated. I think that's very simple. We, um, should be able to have a different pair of eyes to examine what has happened rather than people here, uh, that would be involved with the same practice. Uh, thirty-eight point twenty-two, uh, while there may be difference in the approach of governing, uh, law is law. Uh, therefore, a proper interpretation is necessary to successfully, uh, conduct city business. It's common, uh, for the concerns of the public to fall on deaf ears once it makes it to this podium. So, I believe that, um, it warrants legal oversight from the courts. Then we'll look at thirty-eight forty-two. Uh, this is simple. Judges are finding, uh, citizens guilty of laws that do not exist. Um, that should be. That should be, there should be, rather, serious consequences for these type of actions. Then we turn to 46.43. Officers are human, so when they make mistakes, they should be offered the needed training. However, when officers issue illegal citations, I believe a minimum, and it's specified which clauses and the code for you to refer to, I believe at minimum, they should face the same fees citizens face when we are accused of not being law-abiding. Then we look at 46.48. People's livelihoods are controlled by actions that are made in this chamber. So the court of public opinion is extremely vital. Abraham Lincoln shared that with us. So I believe that there is non-conviction data that is preventing people, organizations, entities, whatever, from conducting business with the city. If it has not been convicted or been before court in two years, it should be removed because it's wasting time and it's destroying the progress of the city, which everyone says we want to move forward. Now, for legislators, make the citizens good by forming habits in them, and this is the wish of every legislator. And those who do not affect it miss their mark. And it is in this that a good constitution differs from a bad one. Those are words of Aristotle. I'll be back next week to conclude this. Hopefully, someone will have asked questions, because that seems to have been the issue. You've got the material in writing now, so there shouldn't be any additional excuses. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, Madam City Clerk.
Ordinance is held over 01043, ordinance to define the City of Mobile Central Business District.
Motion to lay over one week.
Second. They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for one week.
07058, amend chapter seven of the Mobile City Code, animals and files.
Move to lay over one week.
Second. They're probably moving second in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds?
Very briefly, I have worked with the administration on some amendments. A lot of it's just wording. One of the items that came up last week in pre-council was the requirement of licenses for all dog owners, not other pets, just dog owners. I think we found a middle ground on a way to resolve this would be that if, and this is in the amendment, if your dog is microchipped and registered, then they are not required to buy a license, and I think that allows the animal control officers, the animal services, the opportunity to identify any dogs that are stray or the like. But there's quite a few others. A lot of it's fairly minor stuff, but those have been distributed, and hopefully, we can get a vote on this next week.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for one week.
64059, rezone property located at 5015, 5017, 5019, 5021, 5029, 5033, 5039, 5049, 5051, 5055, 5121, and 5133 Cottage Hill Road, 2113 Demetropolis Road, and 2104 Carmen's Lane, from R2 and B2 to B2.
So moved.
Second. They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions held over 40786, declare the structure at 1005 Texas Street a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Mr. President.
Hold up.
So moved.
No. Uh... Hold up, Mr. Carroll. Can I get a second? Discussion, Mr. Carroll.
I was trying to change that, Mr. President. I got a request from a contractor in between pre-council and now wanting to look and see if this property could be renovated. I'm gonna ask if we could lay this over for one week and give a last opportunity to probably try to save this property. There's, it has substantial historic value. I have no qualms with trying to save it. If we can't get it done in this week, then next week, we'll just let it go. I sent a message up to David earlier, so I was trying to change this to, let's move it to lay over one week. If I can get a rescension on the current motion that's on the floor, I would really appreciate that.
Still have discussion. Mr. Davis, so another week will be okay? All right. Would you like to go ahead and rescind?
You have to rescind your motion. You got a second on it?
Okay.
All right. Now, Mr. President, motion to lay over one week, please.
All right. Properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for one week.
Thank you.
Resolutions held over 07947, approve the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds from Capital Trust Authority not to exceed $438,231,000. 08997, approve purchase order to Schaefer Plastics North America for 793 residential trash containers. 08998, approve purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for 50 sets of burnout bunker gear. 08999, approve purchase order to IT Fender for managed network threat protection equipment and one-year support subscription. 091,000, transfer funds from General Fund to Capital Improvement Fund, Capital Project, Cruise Terminal, New Gangway. 211,001, authorized change order, 211,002 also, authorized change order with John G. Walton Construction for Texas Street Rehabilitation Project and Broad Street Redevelopment Project. 601,003, authorized release of claims and settlement agreements.
So moved.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Ordinance is being introduced 64060 through 65061.
Move for immediate consideration and waiving the rules to take up 64-060 with 65-061, laying over one week for council rules.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
64060, ordinance to amend section 64.3.1 Downtown Development District of the current zoning ordinance, chapter 64 of Mobile City Code 1991, and amend appendix A Downtown Development District of the Unified Development Code, chapter 64 of the Mobile City Code 2022.
Mr. President, move to hold over two weeks.
Second.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over for two weeks.
Consent resolutions being introduced 371,005 through 601012.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions, as read. Second.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
371,005, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for slurp society on St. Michael Street. 401006, 401008 are declaring the structures at 607 Pettit Avenue and 604 Taita Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 581009, declare we's noxious group 1636. 601010, 1011, and 1012 are determining appropriations to Yorktown Baptist Church, Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation, Inc., and Providence Foundation serve a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
401007, declare the structure at 357 Rylands Lane a public nuisance and order it demolished.
Motion to lay over 60 days.
Second.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Resolutions being introduced 081013 through 601018.
For council rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week.
Call for public hearings. 411019, call for public hearing to rezone property located at the west side of Todd Acres Drive, 25th mile north of Hamilton Boulevard, extending to the east side of CSX Railroad from RA to I-1, scheduled December 20. 411020, call for public hearing to consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity through Mobile Pedal Tours LLC to operate an electric motor-assisted pedal vehicle, scheduled November 29.
So moved.
Second.
They're probably moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements.
District Six, Councilman Penn. I'm excuse, I'm sorry, John.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and of all, thank you to the mayor and to all those that put together the prayer breakfast this morning. What an incredible event. Not often you have an opportunity to sit there and listen to a guy that walked on the moon, and we were able to do that this morning. Also, thanks to all those throughout the city that put together the numerous Veterans Day events. What an honor to be a part of those. There's many cities throughout this nation that don't recognize Veterans Day, and to be a part of a city that really tips its cap off, tips its cap to the veterans is something to watch and be a part of, so thank you for that. On the 14th of December, at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we'll be having our District Six Christmas Social. It'll be a lunch at the Connie Hudson Senior Citizen Center. Look forward to seeing everybody in District Six out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. On 16 November, excuse me, on November 16, tomorrow afternoon, 6 o'clock, I will be in the Flo Claire neighborhood with a scheduled community meeting discussing issues and projects in the area and any concerns that the neighbors should have. That will take us into what we look like will be the next citywide cycle of meetings, which will start after the first of the year. I look forward to starting to getting those meetings back up again and sending out notifications. Now, for some good news. Last week was a tremendous week for the City of Mobile. I can't think of a day that I was not downtown between Wednesday and Sunday that there were not people everywhere in this city participating in everything that we had to offer. From Thursday night until Saturday afternoon, and then again on Sunday morning, just the participation from people out of town, the businesses being filled, things happening. One day, one of the restaurants closed at 9:00, but because of so much activity down there, I think they opened back up. So we really saw the Gulf Coast Challenge this time put on a show for the City of Mobile. The stadium, I think, had about maybe 31, 32,000 people in it, which was tremendous for our game. I mean, we all know that it's only one stadium in the city that can seat more than 30,000 people. Again, there was probably another, at halftime, another 2,000 people still trying to get into the game on the east side of the stadium. And that says a lot for what this game has produced. I can't wait to see what the economic impact was to the city for the weekend, but great job. Art Walk that Friday night with the American Indians were, just, I mean, with the Creek Indians, which were Native American Indians, was also tremendous. I can't tell you Friday night, there wasn't one place from Montegraw Park to the high side of Dolphin Street, and we've got to come up with something else other than Loda, because Loda is lower Dolphin Street. We've got to come up with a higher Dolphin Street now, because what Grace has done at the top of Dolphin Street and the new things that are happening up there, there wasn't one inch of our entertainment district or Montegraw Park that wasn't covered with people in our city. So congratulations to everybody that had something to do with this past weekend. It was one incredible weekend for the City of Mobile.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
No announcements.
District Five, Councilman Davis?
No announcements.
District Seven, Vice President Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just echo what my colleagues have said about this past week in Mobile, from all of the Veterans Week activities to the Gulf Coast Challenge, the prayer breakfast this morning, of course. It has been a truly wonderful week in the City of Mobile, and I just look forward to much more of that coming up, especially with the holidays, the lighting of the Christmas tree is coming up as we move forward. It's just a great time to be in the City of Mobile, and I think we're all very excited. In District Seven, we have our annual Christmas get-together. It's coming up December 5 at 6:00 p.m. at the Mobile Museum of Art. We will again be collecting needed items for all of the residents at Wilmer Hall. When you get your postcard in the mail, it will have details about the items that they need, most importantly. Also, the Forest Hill Elementary School chorus will be there to entertain, and just a lot of good food and fellowship at the Mobile Museum of Art. We'll have members of the administration there to speak about things going on within the departments, and we'll get a quick overview of what's happening in the City of Mobile. But this is always a way for us to recognize our first responders and our community action group presidents and homeowners association presidents for all that they do as well. So again, it's December 5, 6:00 p.m. at the Mobile Museum of Art. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. And I'd like to also, I'm gonna go behind my colleagues also, and send great events that we had this past week in Mobile, from the Veterans Day activities all the way to Gulf Coast Classic this weekend, and especially, congratulations to Mr. Kevin Ball and also Mr. Tim Hale Jr. for putting on a great event in their style. I mean, it was really tremendous weekend here in Mobile. People from everywhere just about enjoying, you know, the festivities, and a lot of the festivities was free. And again, you know, as someone's stated, it was nothing to do this weekend in Mobile, they are storyteller. And again, you know, one person had mentioned also this past weekend, one thing that Mobile is missing now, the kid things off for the holidays is Bay Fest. So hopefully, that next fall, we'll have something, you know, like a music celebration, you know, for all the citizens can enjoy, because that's something that people still have been hollering about is a big music celebration here in downtown Mobile. And also, I would like to thank Cassandra and also Courtney, and also you, Ms. Keisha Brown, for coming out last evening, and also the staff, administrative staff of the administration of the City of Mobile for coming out last evening to Isha Merch Elementary School. We had our second meeting last evening, and I really do appreciate the residents for coming out. It was probably one of the smallest meetings I ever had since I've been on council, but it was a very productive meeting. And again, I do like to thank everyone for coming out last evening. Is there anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
They're probably moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?